I'm good. Good evening, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of August 13th, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball.
President.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
I am here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Mayor Heikala.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one is the approval of minutes. Approval of City Council Norman Utility Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, City Council Business and Community Affairs Committee, and City Council Finance Committee meeting minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion second. Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Well, this is what I got.
All votes have been approved. The minutes passes unanimously.
All right. Next item is council announcements. I'll start with Ward One.
Thank you, sir. First and foremost, I haven't heard the Pledge of Allegiance said like that in here since I've been a council member, so thank everybody for coming and having pride in your community and pride in this country. Number two, Porch Fest 2024 is coming up August 31st, six to 10. It'll be in the Miller Historic District, Wes McMichael, if you know him, you can email him. He's a music instructor here, but he is the rep for that. Number three, the American Red Cross, it's just that time of year where they need blood donations, and so they reached out to all of us. I know the city brings a truck up here every now and then, I'm not sure when the next one is, but if it's not anytime soon, maybe we can get that going. And I think that's all.
Thank you. We have a series of appointments tonight on our agenda, and I just want to acknowledge Ward Two Resident Chris Purcell. He is slated to serve on the Economic Development Advisory Board, and I just want to acknowledge him and thank him for his service.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you all well. I only have two announcements. I had been out of town for about 10 days, so I am working hard to get caught up on emails, phone calls, and texts, so please bear with me and have some patience as I get through hundreds of emails. And secondly, I would like to thank interim director Scott Stewart and your staff for working on getting some sidewalks in Ward Three ADA compliant. I appreciate it, and so do my constituents. Other than that, thank you all for being here, and for those of you online, thank you for being here.
Councilmember?
Yes. Good evening, Ward Four in City of Norman. I just wanted to acknowledge what a beautiful reprieve we had from our typical August weather this past Friday. However, that wonderfully cool weather segued into intense flooding on Saturday. The city has received reports to the action line, but earlier we released a reminder to let residents know to report their flood damage to the Stormwater Division through the following form. This does not replace filing with your insurance for property loss for either your house or your car or other property you might have insured. This action helps the city gather data and apply for funding to enhance stormwater infrastructure, which can mitigate future flooding. Next, I'm happy to share the Original Townsite Neighborhood Meeting. It's coming up on August 17th at 10:00 a.m. It will be held at the American Legion Post Number 88 located at 710 East Main Street. The boundaries of Original Townsite Neighborhood include streets that are north of Alameda, east of Porter, west of Carter, and south of Gray. The meeting is open to those interested in the Voluntary Neighborhood Association. It's for participation and membership, and this only applies to residents, property owners, businesses, and nonprofits located in Original Townsite. Anyone who would like more information can connect with Original Townsite Neighborhood via tinyurl.com/otsneighborhood, or they can call 405-672-7872 for more information. Just a reminder, if you would like me to amplify your neighborhood's organizing or help get you in touch with our Neighborhood Alliance rep, for which we are approving another year's contract on tonight's Cassette Agenda, email me at wardfour@normanok.gov or visit nacok.org. Last, I would like to thank Ward Four resident Janice Oak for her commitment to serve our Norman community. Tonight she will be appointed to the ADA Citizens Advisory Committee for a three-year term. Thank you.
Councilmember?
No announcements this week. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Good evening, City of Norman and Ward Six. I just have a few announcements. I'd like to remind everybody that participated in the Pioneer Library Summer Learning Program that this is the final week for that, so parents and adults, make sure you get all of your reading time logged so you can get your points and your prizes. The youth volleyball signup at the Young Family Athletic Center, late registration has started. It goes through August 25th, so if that's something that you're interested in, make sure to access the website through the city and sign up for that. Also, there's an event this Friday night at Westwood. It's an adult swim called Ditch Your Boots. It's a country-themed 21 and up adult swim at Westwood. And then my last announcement is just to wish the best of luck to Norman Public School students and all of the private school students, teachers, and administrative staff as they go back to school on Thursday, and I just hope that you all have a great year and full of learning and excitement. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, and good evening to everyone here and watching at home. Just a few announcements. There is a much anticipated ribbon cutting next, let's see, on the 22nd. At 7:00 p.m., the new James Garner Boulevard and the roundabout and the piece of public art in the middle of it will be cutting the ribbon on that. That is a voter-approved project that was part of the 2015 Norman Forward Initiative, and would invite anybody interested in seeing that to come out and check that out. And then also, we have on the 27th, one of our previous meetings, I had announced that it was going to be July 18th, but it ended up getting postponed, but the ribbon cutting for the new Norman Emergency Operations Center, which is another voter-approved project on East Robinson, that will house our emergency dispatch center, which is currently in the basement of the Police Department. It will also host our emergency management staff and our traffic control management at some point as well. It's a hardened facility that can withstand a, I don't know about an F5 tornado, but a pretty significant direct hit, and it will protect those city services that will make sure that we can continue to function in an emergency like that. So that, again, will be on the 27th. And then also wanted to remind everybody that next Thursday at 4:00 here at City Hall is the Community Planning and Transportation Committee, where every month we discuss public transit ridership. We get an update from city staff on ridership numbers, on the budget, on projects, on issues with routes, changes to routes, anything like that, so if you're interested in public transit at all, you're welcome to tune into that on the City of Norman YouTube channel or in person here at City Hall at 4:00 next week. We also discuss road construction projects. We've had recent discussions about Highway Nine and safety issues with Highway Nine. We'll be discussing, kind of getting an update on those things as we have started a new City Council year in July. So anything related to public transit or transportation infrastructure is of interest to you, then I definitely encourage you to tune into that committee. You're welcome to send me any questions or comments about it at wardseven@normanok.gov or anybody else on the council, and we'll make sure that those questions get asked and answered. If you have any suggestions, we'll be sure to take those up for consideration as well. So that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Just a couple. Just want to remind everybody that the AIM Norman project is still going on. It's the comprehensive kind of master plan and land use plan for the city. You can go to aimnorman.com. You're able to still provide input there and also get updates of where the AIM Committee's at, what's going on there. And I'd also like to recognize Ward Eight resident Chip Minty, who was appointed to the Bicycle Advisory Committee. If there's, please get on the website and look at, kind of, I think it's committees and whatever. Look and see if there's a committee that has openings, if you're interested in getting a little bit more involved. Please, you can submit your applications online. It's a great way to get involved, and there's a lot of different committees, so you should be able to find one that you're interested in, and hopefully there's a space available on it, and that's all I've got.
Boards and commissions would be that page. Mayor has none. Next item is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item Two through Item Thirty-eight be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place Items Two through Thirty-eight on the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. Motion on the floor is to place Items Two through Thirty-eight on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place Items Two through Thirty-eight on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Councilmember?
Yes. I would like to highlight the following items. As I know, affordable housing, fair housing, and homeownership opportunities are important to our Norman community. If any items mentioned pique your interest, you can find them on our website in tonight's agenda packet. All items have hyperlinks to staff reports and contracts. Item 21 relates to fair housing. The funding requested by the Metropolitan Fair Housing Council will provide fair housing services for residents of Norman. Those services include educational outreach, investigation of fair housing complaints, and other related activities. Item 22 is about the CDBG Policy Committee recommending that $100,000 of funding be designated within the FYE 25 fifth-year action plan to the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation for the acquisition of property to be utilized for affordable housing. Item 23 is about $40,000 going to Rose Rock Habitat for Humanity for purchasing land for affordable housing, and you can find this in the agenda, as I said, but once this contract is awarded, prior to distribution of funds, Rose Rock Habitat for Humanity will be required to provide documentation to the City of Norman of any intended property for purchase. This documentation will require an appropriate appraisal for cost reasonableness and evaluation of the site for appropriateness. An environmental review will be completed in accordance with HUD regulations prior to distribution of funds. Item 24 will help eight home buyers if they qualify. Prospective home buyers are responsible for coordinating their application with Neighborhood Housing Services and obtaining their own mortgage from a lender of their choice. Unlike the previous program, and that history is also in our agenda in the staff report, the client is not required to be a first-time home buyer but must still utilize the property as their primary residence for a period of five years. Other requirements are that the property must be, meet a minimum property standards, including not being located within a 100-year flood zone, and the household must be at or below 80% median family income as established annually by HUD. Funding that is available to assist eight households with a maximum assistance of $14,999 per household. Thank you, that's it.
All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. The Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Nonconsent items. Item number 39, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma acknowledging the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority's Access Oklahoma Program to improve and construct turnpike facilities in the City of Norman and to protect and preserve the Lake Thunderbird Watershed and the Canadian River Corridor, the city's water, drinking water supply, and the city's flood hazard areas. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Grant.
Yes. I would like to make a motion to postpone Item 39 until a date certain of August 27th, 2024. As discussed in our council conference, I have concerns about the draft process and the discussions to be had still. I know other council members would like the opportunity to discuss various items in the proclamation as well. Thank you.
Need a second to that? We have a second. Any further discussion? Councilmembers? Oh, who? Councilmember Hinkle. You don't care about? Peacock? Where'd you go?
Yeah, I just want to say that I share the same line of thinking as Councilmember Grant. There's a lot still to be discussed on this item, and I think it's appropriate to send it back to another study session and give us one more crack before we bring it to you guys for time time.
All right. Anything else? All right. Councilmembers? Councilmembers, the motion on the floor is to postpone Item Number 39 until a date certain of August 27th of this year. Councilmembers, you can cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the item is postponed until August 27th.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council due to Open Meeting Act regulations. Council is not able to participate in discussions during miscellaneous comments, and remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we'll start with Amy Serrata. Kelly Wilson. Tassie Hirschfeld.
Kelly Wilson, 5601 in Broadway, Ward Six. I just want to thank you all for tabling this for now because I feel like there's a lot of information that you need to know before making such a significant decision that's going to impact a lot of residents in the City of Norman, and I feel like as our elected representatives, you're our voice to make sure that the citizens are protected and taken care of, so I appreciate the fact that you're taking this time. I actually made you guys a packet full of a lot of information, of the data that I have collected over the past two and a half years, and I think you'll find it really interesting. Specifically, what I wanted to talk about is the fact that most municipalities and ODOT follow the Uniform Relocation Act, which provides a lot of services and benefits to our residents that are displaced for a project such as this. The OTA does not. Condemnation through the OTA is brutal, and if you look at some of the numbers on the Kikapoo, that will kind of tell the story there. There were 104 homes taken, 44 went through the condemnation process. Of those, there were 13 were in the court system for at least one year, one for three years, and five that have been in the court system for over six years and are still ongoing today. That is partly because the Turnpike Authority is not easy to work with, and they do not afford very many benefits to the citizens they impact. For example, through the Uniform Relocation Act, the, there's a, replacement housing is subject to price differential payments, so if the new house that you're moving into costs a lot more than the house that you're moving out of is worth, ODOT through the Uniform Relocation Act will pay the difference between the two. There's, and they cover, they also cover incidental expenses, such as the closing costs, which would be like your title search, recording fees, surveys, appraisals, inspections, credit reports, notary fees, application fees, escrow closing fee, document preparation. Those are things that the homeowner are going to have to do on their own if they are condemned by the Turnpike Authority. Those services are incredibly important to especially our elderly community, and there are a lot of people that are going to be impacted in that category of the elderly. This is a map of Ward Eight, and you can see right here there are 22 houses that will be taken by the Turnpike Authority, and that's atrocious. There's nothing I can actually do about that at the moment, but in green, these three properties down here will be taken by what will be the multimodal path, and their property would not fall within the Turnpike Authority's jurisdiction or their right-of-way plans, but these three will. And these three properties are located within 150 feet of what the Turnpike Authority currently has as their right-of-way. This is why I'm telling you this, because the City of Norman can prevent that from happening. You can put restrictions in place that help protect our citizens.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Heikala, City Council, thank you for giving us a chance to speak to you today. I did not hear a time limit on comments. Three minutes, okay. I prepared a statement, and I will do my best to get through it in the amount of time allotted. I'm Tassie Hirschfeld. I'm in Ward Five. I live on East Cedar Lane, right next to where the turnpike will go through. But that's actually not what I'm going to talk to you today. I'm going to talk to you about something called the Tuna Bond Scandal, which I'm guessing that no one's ever heard of, but it has a lot of important lessons for you today. This was a corruption case that was recently settled in the UK and in the US, and I feel that you are about to make the same mistakes that the government of the country of Mozambique made that led to this settlement. There was 1.4 billion in claims, 547 million in fines and penalties to the lending banks, and $220 million settlement from the government in response to this corruption case. And so I'm going to redo some language from the judge in the UK where he talks a lot about ethics and the need to have standards that rise even if it isn't at the level of illegality of the importance of standards in planning and in city government. And so he begins by saying, "The trial is a case of Mozambique as a developing nation being exploited by highly-developed institutions and corporations that should have known better, but it also showed a nation well capable of doing better, but which was let down by its own officials and office holders. It's remarkable to note, I was unable to identify a single senior official or office holder who stood up for Mozambique or challenged or tested what might have been going on. There was corruption, yes, but this was a case about the overall absence of standards that went far wider than the corruption. There were those who prepared to prey on weaknesses and inexperience, those who saw the opportunity to make money with no regard to whether the project would fail and what that would mean for others, those who set their sights on self-interest and personal financial reward and put those over any sense of responsibility. There were no searching questions about preparation or the projections, which turned out to be false, much like the OTA's traffic projections always do. Sometimes one piece of behavior below proper standards enabled another with ultimate consequences that were truly serious. Some might be able to say that the law had any relevant regulatory framework, did not require more of them than what they did, but that's not the point. Those who did the worst may suffer legal or regulatory consequences, but what about the others? Law and regulation- Law and regulation alone cannot do the heavy lifting. Even when remarkable law is available, it's not a source of standards. This case shows why ethics is so critical in finance, in commerce, and in state administration, and how bad things can get without ethics." And I have...
About Sean O'Leary, lying to the city of Norman, a citizen at a public meeting with OTA officials, telling us that only one or two properties went to court via eminent domain of the Turnpike. We counted them, there were far more, and the settlements were due. And so when local officials do not follow ethical standards, they accept employment that is in correction, very similar to what I was describing.
Refrain from clapping, please. We're trying to get these people time to be able to speak, and we don't want to take the time to clap. Next, please.
Julie Sandag. And following Julie will be Rob Norman.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Julie Sandag with Ward 5. The OTA is a machine that is fueled by greed and corruption. Every night since I've learned about the Turnpike Plan for Norman, I go to bed with a stomach ache. The OTA has a long history of not caring for its neighbors. This Access Oklahoma project in Norman will require the largest land grab of any Turnpike build. Over 600 homes will be bulldozed. I ask you, our leaders, who were elected to represent us, the people of this community, how many homes would need to be on the chopping block before we put a stop to the OTA? How many people have to be displaced, heartbroken, worried, unable to sleep, unable to focus at their jobs, on their families, unable to enjoy the simple moments because of what looms over them? The language in this bullied resolution is utterly misleading, and the OTA continually makes their own rules for their roads. The city of Norman asked two years ago for environmental studies. The OTA refuses to produce them. When asked where the access plan was in the Association of Central Oklahoma Government's 2045 Plan, ACOG stated that the OTA refused to participate. When Oklahoma City sent them the $600,000 bill for the road damages post-Kickapoo Turnpike build, the OTA still has not paid. The citizens impacted by the 2018 Kickapoo Turnpike build still have outstanding lawsuits that the OTA refuses to settle. I attended the town hall meeting when Mayor Heikola asked how he could stop the OTA. Oklahomans for Responsible Transportation, Councilman Nash, former mayors, past city council members, and those who have been painfully and passionately fighting the Goliath OTA have given you and the city staff the tools to stop this steal. Your citizens don't want this Turnpike. Your neighbors don't want this Turnpike. Our schoolchildren, our farmers, our business owners, our veterans, and our elders do not want this Turnpike. You do have the power to stand up to the OTA Goliath and say emphatically, "No."
I think it became apparent, probably at least to me and some other council members earlier tonight, that postponement was clearly the way this was headed, and it was clearly the right thing to do. So in miscellaneous comments, I'm going to reemphasize things. First, we do have a member of our legislature in the House tonight, our State Representative, 45, Annie Mins. Had she signed up for miscellaneous comments, I'm authorized to say she would be willing to speak with you tonight, and maybe you should make an exception. If you're not going to be willing to do that, I'm authorized to say that she wants you, and Danny Sterling, another one of our state representatives, very much wants you to stay strong. That means a lot to the legislature, that they know, they have asked us to tell you to stay strong in your opposition to these turnpikes. Do not do anything that would revoke the 2022 resolution, and we're going to ask you in this amendment process to do something that's going to make some of you uncomfortable, and that is namely to maintain your stand in opposition to these turnpikes. You can do that and still work with the OTA. I sent out an email with suggested language on how to do that. It's something that people in politics, we elected you because we feel you have the skillset. You can maintain the basic position of your constituents, which is opposition to these turnpikes, and still work with the OTA. I do it in my profession every day. I don't give in because I work with the other side to try to reach alternative solutions which may have to be reached. We live in the real world. We know that a majority of this body wants to do a resolution, but stick with language in opposition to the turnpikes. And a few other things, I sent an email out. Please read it. It has it bullet pointed. Please pay careful attention to Mr. Nash's red-line version. It has things that we're going to want you to put in there and keep in there. A few things I'd like to emphasize are the federal relocation assistance laws. You need to lean on the OTA to do that. Those specifically, Ms. Wilson talked about that. OTA doesn't have to do that, but ODOT in this city must in many situations. That concept is a make-whole concept. It includes making displaced homeowners whole, providing relocation services, and ensuring that no individual or family is displaced unless decent, safe, and sanitary housing is available within the displaced person's financial means. That is incredibly important right now to insist upon. That's all my time. Thank you.
Richard Lambarth.
Can I go? You call my name, I'm going to hear. Amy Serata?
That's not up to me. James Livingston?
We'll put you at the end.
James Livingston? Marguerite Larson? Just a moment, sir. Go ahead, Marguerite. He can come in right behind you. Yeah, he can come in right behind you.
Six, so I think most of the information has been presented to you. There really isn't anything that I can say to add to it, except that this is your community. How do you want your community to stand? You're saving seven minutes. That's all this is doing, saving seven minutes. Is seven minutes worth, worth the displacement of your neighbors? Is it really? This is not an economic. It's not going to bring economics into the city. It's not going to enhance anything by having a McDonald's on the road if you really think people are going to drive off and do that, not by saving seven minutes. It's not feasible, it's not economically sound, and it sure as hell isn't good for our neighbors. Thank you.
Pam Post will follow Mr. Livingston.
Thank you all, Council, for allowing me to speak today. I've never done anything like this before, never stood in front of anybody. I always thought everybody else could handle it. You know, but I taught myself out of all day long, and I felt like I needed to be here because I worry about it, the Turnpike. I've been around turnpikes, and it's not fun. You know, they say, they always say, like, nobody's above the law, but I feel like OTA in Oklahoma is the only one that's above the law. They can do what they want, when they want, and I felt like we got counsel that we voted for that should lead us through it and not let OTA take over. Not a day go by that I don't think about it. And now everybody got their own opinion, how they're going to vote. It's just really sad, and I was determined I had to be here. Like I said, I've never done this before, and I've watched people, I've watched speeches. There's a lot of good people out there on the Turnpike, OTA leaders. Dr. Amy, I've never met anybody, not anybody in this room. Dr. Amy is fantastic. Dave Moore, Rob Norman, Tassie. I watch it, and I feel for all of our people, not just Ward 5, but the whole Cleveland County having to go through this. And I'm disabled, and I determined I was going to get here. I've been paying all the time. That's how important it is to me, to Norman. I don't want to see turnpikes on the both sides of Norman. I thank you all for letting me speak, and like I say, I just hope everything goes right. Thank you all.
Hi, I'm Pam Post from Ward 8. Thank you for letting me come back and speak to you all again. And actually, I'm not in Ward 8, I'm in Ward 5. I'll figure it out. I want to thank you all for taking a moment to step back and taking a deep breath. You have recognized that by signing a resolution tonight, that is a, it is a hasty move that will negatively affect the city of Norman. Here tonight, there are citizens that are asking you to hear their voices and prepare a resolution that presents them. Many of them have spent over two years investigating the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority. They are ready to share with the council the information that they have found about OTA's questionable practices and procedures. Based on their work, the Oklahoma Attorney General has asked the state auditor to investigate the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority. Do you really want to adopt any resolution that puts the city of Norman in bed with an agency that is being investigated about their financial procedures? Do you know the definition of a bully? Bullying is a blustering, mean, or predatory person who, from a perceived position of relative power, intimidates, abuses, harasses, or coerces people, especially those considered unlikely to defend themselves. A bully's behavior is often repeated and habitual. They are aggressively dominant and intimidate. How does the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority fit the definition of a bully? One, OTA believes they can dominate over Norman. Their perception is that they are an instrumentality of the state with the power to make demands of any governmental body, which they frequently do and are doing to you now. Two, OTA is adamantly requesting that you, Norman City Council, sign a resolution that affirms Norman's partnership and cooperation in the development of the turnpikes. You all didn't want to partner with them two years ago, and you're not over the barrel to do it now. They are being aggressive in their requests by demanding a resolution be signed by September 2nd. This OTA mandated date requires you to decide without adequate time to discuss and evaluate all wording possibilities. OTA is threatening you by asserting that the city council does not approve the resolution. Any funding of city requests may be jeopardized. And four, OTA knows that the city is highly unlikely to defend itself in any way. Therefore, the city can expect the OTA to continue its repeated and habitual behavior of not honoring resolutions. Just look at the broken resolution between OTA and Oklahoma County. Several councilmembers have raised concerns that they are being coerced into signing an unwelcome resolution. The truth is, you are being coerced. Why else is... They are expecting your representation, not you kowtowing to bullies. Thank you for being here. Rick Sandag. Mayimi Windler will be next.
Rick Sandag, Ward 5. I just would like you to indulge me for a second. I just want to tell you, I'm no hero, okay? My great-grandfather fought in the Civil War on the side of the Union, 14-years-old. My grandfather, the trenches of your World War I. My father, infantryman, World War II, was awarded the Bronze Star at the Battle of the Bulge. And I asked him once, I said, "What's so great about a democracy?" And he told me, he said, "The best thing about a democracy is everyone has a voice." And in the very next breath, he said, "And the worst thing about a democracy is everyone has a voice." He meant, it takes time to hear the voices, hear everyone's voices. Are you hearing all the voices? I thought they heard us, the OTA heard us back in the 90s when we said no. I thought they heard us a couple of years ago, and we said no. But they keep coming back, like, like a group of marauding bandits in an old western. They keep coming back to our village to pillage us and impose their will upon the citizens. And we don't have Yul Brynner, or Steve McQueen, or Charles Bronson, or James Coburn to fight them off. Where's our Magnificent Seven? I see them. They're right here in front of me. Our eight councilmen, you are a Magnificent Eight, and with Mayor Heikola and City Manager Pyle, we have a Magnificent Ten. Are you going to be our heroes? Are you going to take the time to hear what we all have to say? Are you going to win a Bronze Star for valor under fire? Let me know.
Hello, I'm Mayimi Windler, Ward 2. So on the item 38, I guess it was, the resolution that is being postponed, use the word "request." Can we use a stronger word than "request"? I mean, it's really like asking the schoolground bully to not steal your lunch money, you know? We need to be stronger than that. Okay, next thing. For the last two weeks, I've been in Canada, in a small town about half the size of Norman. Things that I noticed there, lot sizes were a lot smaller, houses were a lot closer together. There was a lot of mixed use between single-family homes and, like, tiny little apartments, you know, maybe six, eight units in an apartment, then more single-family homes. And then neighborhood shops. There are like a little variety shop on the corner that used to be a house. And now people can walk there, pick up random groceries or whatever. Let's see, so this town, half the size of Norman, it has a real train station. There are two tracks. I looked at the schedule, so tomorrow there are 12 trains going from this small town to Toronto. Tomorrow, there are 10 trains going from Toronto to this small town. It would be nice to have something better than we have going to Fort Worth. That would be really nice. The other thing, I know homelessness is an issue that we're all concerned about. They have it too. There are tents all along the river where people are living, and it's a lot colder there. They have a real problem with people freezing to death. So, that's it. Thanks.
Travis Wilson will follow Kate.
Hi, I'm Kate Contrares. I own property on Indian Hills Road and in Ward 1. I hope you will consider amendments... Sorry, I'm nervous. I don't talk in front of people very often. I hope that you will consider amendments focused on how the OTA uses eminent domain. Research into the OTA's business practice over the last two and a half years has left me quite angry about the way the OTA execs the eminent domain process on citizens displaced from their properties. In addition, they do absolutely nothing for those of us with abutting properties, leaving us trapped into living next to unwanted Turnpike. I want the city council to understand that the OTA is not required to follow the Uniform Relocation Act of 1970 because they use bond money instead of federal tax dollars. For example, the OTA does not cover increased mortgage or tax cost, relocation assistance services, or replacement housing payments like rental or down payment assistance. They also typically pay... They also typically pay much below fair market compensation because they know that people cannot afford the money or the time it takes to take the OTA to court. Please add the following paragraph to your resolution to protect your citizens. Whereas the OTA recognizes that this will be the largest eminent domain taking in the state of Oklahoma, and further agrees to follow the guidelines of the Uniform Relocation Act of 1970, and have relocation agents work in good faith with banking institutions on behalf of the displaced property owners to transfer low-interest rate mortgages to new properties and provide adequate compensation to take into account the added future tax liabilities that long-term residents will incur because of moving. I would like the council to hold a study session with the citizens who have in-depth knowledge and data to share, to ensure the council has as much information as possible before signing a resolution to partner with the OTA. Thank you for delaying your decision on a resolution until you have heard from these citizen experts. Thank you.
Adrienne Goddard will follow Travis Wilson.
All right. Hey, I just want to thank you guys for volunteering and being council members. I know this is a lot of work and a lot of time you put in. I appreciate your efforts. My name is Travis Wilson. I'm a independent oil and gas geophysicist. I live up there just adjacent to the turnpike plans on Indian Hills. My property will abut the current turnpike plans. And I just wanted to kind of bring up one concern I have that I haven't really seen addressed, a caveat, something kind of nuanced, so to speak, but the, my contention is this, is that I don't think the city should empower the turnpike any more than absolutely necessary. We shouldn't give the turnpike any more power to acquire, to imminently domain, to take properties above and beyond what's actually needed for just the actual turnpike and the immediate access roads. And so what I mean is this, is this, if the turn, if the city wants to build bike paths, or green initiatives, or water retention ponds, or something like that that may be well-planned and necessary, those further land takes really need to be acquired by the city. It, it's not okay to farm out the dirty work to the OTA for something that the city wants to build at a further time. So, you know, for example, some of our research has shown that if you, if this bike path is there, that extra 100-foot or whatever, we'll take initial three houses there at the Blue Lake Sedition. So, it, it's not proper for the city to empower the turnpike to go out there and grab that additional property, eminent domain, and take those houses. If, if, if the city wants to expand this, I, I feel like the city should retain control of that process, retain control of any bike paths, or water projects, or whatever. They should make the decision whether to take that property, to bulldoze those houses, or do things like that. And, you know, and for example, there, there's a real-world application here. My, my neighbors behind our house, you know, they have those two big houses on Indian Hills. They own 36 acres. The northern 20 acres is right where the turnpike's going to go. So, those houses will be bulldozed, the pond, the dam will be breached. If those neighbors can't reach an agreement to sell their property to the OTA, the OTA will eminent domain their whole 36 acres, right? As it currently stands, if the turnpike is only allowed to take what they need, those neighbors can fight for and retain those back 16 acres. Maybe they move there and build a new house there. If we attach these further green initiatives to the immediate project and give the OTA power to take those properties...
Hi, my name is Adrienne Goche, and I live in Ward Four. And this is just a little pep talk because I sent you guys all a long email today with lots of talking points. And this is just a follow-up. So, council members and Mayor Haikala, I just want to make sure that everyone feels assured that you do have the power to safeguard our water. This is in reply to a couple of you who seem to think that you don't, but you do. This could be your greatest legacy. I and so many others are counting on you to support a resolution that will protect our water first and foremost. And right now, that resolution must be one that formally opposes these toll roads. I know that this is a tremendous responsibility, and I appreciate your service to our community. On behalf of the Red Earth Group Sierra Club, I sent you a letter today with the subject heading, "You Do Have the Power to Stand Up for Your Constituents and Against the Bullying Tactics of the OTA." That is what tonight means to me, empowerment. You are all legally empowered and obligated to protect Norman's water, and the city, city staff and the city attorney are as well. You do have the power to prohibit these toll roads unless and until all environmental impact statements are fully completed and independently reviewed, and until the OTA submits the required permits from the federal government. They have not done that yet. You do have the power to refuse to negotiate with the OTA until this is done. You and the staff do have the power to use your legal authority to enforce two existing state statutes that protect our water. Even though these statutes are mentioned in this hybrid partnership resolution, the city would have an impossible time enforcing them after it has prematurely agreed to designs and routes, and to providing the needed infrastructure after the toll roads are built. You do have the power to refuse to sign a pledge of support for a project we do not want, cannot afford, and one that would displace 6% to 10% of our residents. We support all of our council members to do the right thing for our rural neighbors and for the entire Norman community. And finally, the Sierra Club Red Earth Group fully supports any and all changes and floor amendments that Nash and Pikeoff OTA are able to make in this hybrid resolution. And we also strongly endorse their original resolution to protect and preserve our water. You can do this because you must do this, council members and city staff. Thank you.
John Willard. John, yeah, your turn. John, can you move over in front of the microphone, please? Or pull it towards you a little bit?
I'm going to be coming to these meetings for the foreseeable future because I've petitioned my government for the redress of my grievances, and my government has failed me. So, we're going to start tonight by reading this. This is certificate of license. So, this is certified that John Clyde Willard, who has given evidence that God has called him into the gospel ministry, was licensed to preach the gospel, as he may have opportunity, and to exercise his gifts in the work of the ministry. Melbourne First Baptist Church, signed. That's a real one. It didn't come off the internet. And there's a stamp right here in the corner of it that says that the Johnson County Court has got the original. And that means this court, or the court, the city council, the state of Oklahoma, recognizes me as a minister of the gospel. And it exercises my rights as such. The Norman Police Department have 16 staples in this shelter where they tore muscle, tissue, and ligament damage, tooth knocked out, paid $14,000 for them teeth. The last two cops that arrested me at food and shelter while I was engaging in a constitutional protected activity were wrong. I told them they were wrong. I told them I'd won in court. There was no trespass order. Every charge for two years. See that? There are 14 different occasions, three locations. I've been in jail three times, beat up twice, mocked at, spit on, arms. When that cop was on top of me last time, drug me off a church pew that I was attending church service that was open to the public. But, by the way, the charges have already been dismissed. I don't break laws. I'm not stupid. And I am in Ward One, I think. I'm new to this. But today's going to be the day whether we're going to see whether y'all are part of the problem, or y'all are part of the solution. Because no one disputes the facts. They all proud of it. Lieutenant Griffin, when I went to file excessive force complaint with medical, with proof, you understand? Not baloney. Factual evidence of excessive force with medical while they was violating my rights. Lieutenant... 930315. I have all proof to prove 14 cops...
James Livingston.
Please call me.
I don't think so. Oh, I'm sorry. We've already, I have you on here twice, James, for some reason. Stephen Ellis. Oh, and following Stephen Ellis is Randy Carter.
Pull up my notes. All right, Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I was glad to see that you guys postponed resolution on item 39 tonight. I want to echo Robert Norman's comments on that. I think it's important that we sit down and get this issue right. The resolution, as it was originally proposed, was a bit of a mess. It was a sort of weird combination of concession and begging, and we need to state our position clearly, but we don't really need to concede anything. We're trying to communicate something. I realize they asked us to, like, admit that we want this turnpike, but that's not something that we need to do. OTA needs to know that Norman doesn't want this turnpike. We shouldn't, we can't tell OTA that we're conceding that the proposed turnpikes is a good idea, and that really looked like what that resolution was doing. Perhaps more importantly, we need to let city staff know when they're developing these things, that that resolution that you guys adopted in 2002 is still in effect. So, the policy of the city of Norman right now is that we don't want a turnpike at all. In terms of what we should be doing, we can let OTA know what we would want if a turnpike were forced upon us, but we don't have to concede to their twisting our arm to say in some official public document that we accept that this is a good idea, or even that we accept that this is inevitable, because there are still irons in the fire for us, as I think several commenters has noted. Second point I want to bring up here during miscellaneous is sort of a procedural issue. I think it was pointed out earlier, public participation really matters. You know, democracy is where we all get to speak, and it's a bit of a pain sometimes, but it's important that everyone get listened to. And not allowing public comment on the postponement of the item before was actually a procedural error on your part. It's not appropriate to go back now, probably, but you should know going forward that if you put it on the agenda, you should let people, especially people who signed up to speak on it, speak on it. And it's not appropriate to chide people because they're keeping you from getting out of here quicker. It was on the agenda. You got to sit down and listen if you're going to try to do something about these sorts of contentious kinds of issues. So, I hope we keep going a little further tonight. It's, it's your time to listen, so I hope you will. Thank you.
Following Randy Carter is Andrew Cullen.
Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow citizens of Ward Five and the city of Norman, thank you for the opportunity to let me speak to you all this evening. Is it appropriate, I have a graphic of the slide from the presentation that was given by, I believe, your city engineer at the study session last week. Sorry, that's a mouthful. It lists on here the things that, cooperation in the process will include a certain number of things. We've, they've been discussed earlier. But what bothers me about this slide is that the bottom of it, it says, "Should council not approve the resolution, OTA funding for all the items listed above may be jeopardized." That sounds like a ransom note to me. That sounds like the OTA wants the city council and the city of Norman to be their lapdogs. They want you to climb up on their lap and lick their face. I would be, if I was in your seats, I would be upset about that. And I want you to know that we've discovered that this, this whole packet of information that was presented to you all was developed by a firm, engineering firm, I believe, that is under contract with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority. I believe that your city staff people are supposed to present information to you all that's to the benefit of the city. Getting up and presenting a, a, a series of slides, thank you, that wasn't what I was looking for, but I'll take it. A series of slides that were produced by the people that you're trying to study, I think that's inappropriate. And I think I would encourage you all to give us the opportunity. We've done extensive research onto what the Turnpike Authority does. And as a result of some of this research, Attorney General Geter Dummer has called for an investigative audit of the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority. I mean, he must think there's some shenanigans going on. Or he wouldn't have called for that in the first place. And I don't know if you, I'm, I'm sure you're all are well aware that, but when the Cindy Byrd, the state auditor, called for, or revealed the audit on the epic charter schools, not only was that a scathing audit, but there were indictments that were involved in that. I'm afraid that if, if something comes out, when this Turnpike Authority audit comes out, and you all have approved a resolution supporting them, you may have serious egg on your face. If I was sitting in your seats, I would not want to be putting my head under the sand and just listening to what the Turnpike Authority is telling you. And we've had people that, that mentioned earlier, one of your city engineers that is now in a very plush situation, had given you information that might have been misleading, whether it's intentional or not, we don't know.
Andrew Cullen was next. Following Andrew is Heather Sapini. I apologize if I pronounced that wrong. Okay, following Heather, Cynthia Rogers. Are you Heather? Okay.
Thank you, council, for letting me, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Heather Sapini, and I live in Ward Five. Adrienne, who spoke before me for the Red Earth Group, I allowed her because I am the chair, but I am speaking on my own heart. Building an inclusive community is the city of Norman's motto. Well, building a community is protecting your constituents, water source, not building a turnpike. Clean water is a right, not a privilege. Building a community is protecting Lake Thunderbird's watershed from contamination and flooding, not building a turnpike. Building a community is protecting the wildlife that calls Lake Thunderbird watershed home, not building a turnpike. Building a community is protecting our people from being displaced from their homes or losing their land, not building a turnpike through it. Building a community is the city using its resources to have, to have and build more green spaces, facilities, and places citizens can enjoy. Building a community is investing in better roads, better bus routes, and more bike lanes for people to use in Norman, not building another turnpike. Building a community is working with more in Oklahoma City to plan and execute a light rail, possibly, that can travel to and from so people can enjoy sports events like OUs or concerts. so people can enjoy sports events like OU's or concerts, not building a turnpike. Building a community is not forcing infrastructure that Normanites do not want, such as this proposed turnpike. Building a community is the city of Norman using state statutes, municipal ordinances, and federal laws to protect itself and its citizens from an agency like OTA who bullies and doesn't do its due diligence for its own turnpike project. Council members and mayor, as I stated here, there are better ways to build an inclusive community. Thank you for tabling item number 39. I ask you to please sever Councilmember Nash's resolution from this convoluted hybrid in future meetings. If you care about your city and its citizens, you will vote yes only to Nash's piece and disregard what OTA pushed out. Past decisions have mucked up our water source for years. Let's not muck it up anymore. Thank you.
Following Cynthia is Richard Baxter.
Good evening, Cynthia Rogers, Ward Four. I didn't know to wear the red shirt, sorry. I appreciate that you postponed the amendment and I also appreciate all the people that have been working really, really hard to have their voices heard. This is the most significant thing that could happen to our city. I know I talk about the TIF a lot. This is way more important than that. Think about a turnpike. What does it do? It moves cars and people quickly around places from point to point. Does not build community. It does not drive economic development. There's no way that the turnpike that would create, dissect, or trisect our community going around the edges would actually enhance what we have going in Norman. People aren't gonna drive by and say, "Oh, there's a university somewhere there. We should go stop by." They're gonna be like, "Whoop, I'm going where I'm going." So the other thing I wanted to say was that we definitely need to make sure that all the rules are followed, the city laws, the city rules, the protection of our waterway. And the resolution should make it very clear that we're gonna be diligent about protecting Lake Thunderbird, which is already impaired. It's been impaired. It's not getting any better. And then finally, and there's one more thing I wanted to say. I think that we need to contest this. You can't say it's good for the community when it's not. There's no research that shows a turnpike is good for the community. And then the last thing, the really important thing is, we gotta get ahead of this and start testing and monitoring and establishing the baseline so that OTA knows that there will be a baseline to hold them accountable when they screw up our waterway.
Following Richard Baxter is Dustin Metzger.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Baxter. I'm the founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks. We're real, not woke. There's a lot of people here tonight who hearts are heavy, you know, dealing with this turnpike issue. So usually I have a joke and I'm gonna, you know, put that aside. I don't think tonight is a time for jokes. I just want to thank you, Mayor Big H, for your help with all the work that I'm doing in the community. Sergeant Jeff Casillas and the good folks at the Norman Police Department for helping as well. And that's basically all I got to say. I mean, I'm new to Norman. I started going to OU in January. I am on the honors, just to let you guys know. But yeah, so this is a very serious issue. I really appreciate everybody coming out and speaking their piece. I come to the city council meeting once a month and it's usually very thin and sparse around here. So it's good to see a lot of people in here. Thank you.
Following is Dustin Metzger here. Okay, Greg Fitter. Following Greg will be Floyd Carroll.
Good evening. My name is Greg Fitter, Norman, Ward Five. I have been a resident of Norman for the last 55 years. I have civil engineering degrees from OU and OSU and worked nearly 40 years designing highway bridges for the transportation systems of Oklahoma. The first and foremost ethic in the Code of Ethics for the American Society of Civil Engineers is to hold paramount the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Civil engineers must constantly strive to gain and maintain public trust through ethical practice. The American Society of Civil Engineers advocates that civil engineers must continually guard against conflicts of interest, either real or perceived. OTA contracted with a private sector engineering firm for the overall management of the access program. Under this contract, three engineering firms are responsible for the environmental studies, environmental permitting, and environmental field compliance. Each of these three firms also holds an additional contract with OTA for engineering design of access projects. Therein lies the real or perceived conflict of interest. These three firms stand to benefit from design work on access projects justified by access environmental studies generated by these same three firms. Real or perceived conflicts of interest promote a skeptical public. It seems unlikely these firms can render truly critical and objective environmental studies regarding the Lake Thunderbird watershed. The city of Norman should insist that any access-related environmental studies for our irreplaceable watershed be conducted by legitimately independent and unbiased third-party entities. Thank you.
Floyd Carroll? There he is.
That's gonna be a tough act to follow, but I can tell I'm in the right vote because Dan Jacobs, Kim Roper, and Eddie Reed robbed me of my home in 10 days. They condemned it in Midwest Reckoning Boulevard. So these people that are worried about their house... Oh, they tried to charge me for it, too. I forgot to tell you that. Jerry McNard over at the Wellness Center reminded me of it. So I'm in here to talk to you. I'd like to talk to the police chief because I called 911 and for some reason, I'm not authorized to report stuff. And a week and a half later, I told him, "If you're not gonna do nothing about it, take a report." And they're not taking reports on that either. So I'd like to talk... I see the police chief around town. I can talk to him then or he can stop by my house. And I'm voting for this mayor. And this guy over here... One time Jeffrey Dean Harrison jumped on me and I hit the street and cracked my cheek right here. And I come down here to complain about it and I'm not complaining, I'm begging for mercy because I thought you was gonna put me in jail over that. A few years before that, he jumped on me behind 615 in the alley. He jumped on me and you guys put me in jail or the police put me in jail. So anyway, I don't know how you're gonna get a handle on this mess, but I'm voting for you again. Thank you, sir.
Amy. Amy Serrato.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Sorry I was late. My daughter had her first high school volleyball game. So my name is Amy Serrato. I live in Ward Five. And I've devoted thousands of hours to understanding how the OTA works after finding out about the access program in February of 2022. And I'm the president of two nonprofits in Norman, Pikeoff OTA and the Oklahomans for Responsible Transportation. And I'm here to ask you for the chance to hold a study session with us so you can hear all of our knowledge before we get into any agreement with the OTA. We've given you nothing but facts for two and a half years. And in fact, like Randy said, we've been so successful that for the first time in 77 years, the Attorney General called for an investigative audit of the OTA. The legislature let us do two interim studies that led to two bills that were passed into law, protecting the citizens for eminent domain takes and changing the way the OTA board is made up. We took that power away from the governor and we're still not done. We do a really good job of explaining the historical malfeasance and ulterior motives that the OTA has when they engage with municipalities. We know that Oklahoma County got completely run over with a kickapoo and have millions of dollars outstanding in damages on the roadways, as well as in the creek turnpike entered into a resolution. The OTA agreed to do environmental mitigation and then stuck the city of Jenks with $1.6 million in bills and said, "Yeah, we're not gonna do that." And so I just want you to understand that writing a resolution with the OTA doesn't mean that they're gonna do anything they say they're gonna do. And it just ties our hand. And when they tie our hands and we agree to partner, we lose our ability to negotiate anything. And so I want to tell you the fact of the day, since we always come with facts, that the turnpikes are not a done deal. The Oklahoma Turnpike Authority still does not have any environmental studies that the city of Norman requested they do from two and a half years ago in our 2022 resolution. They don't have any federal permissions to cross either the Canadian River corridor or Lake Thunderbird. And in fact, Lake Thunderbird told them, "You need to come back with us, to us, with alternative routes and environmental impact statements to even consider crossing our easements." Why are they asking the city of Norman to enter into a partnership when they don't have the permissions to build a roadway? And so to end, I'd like to ask you to set up a town hall with us and I want you to instruct your city staff to stop giving the OTA work permits within our city until we figure all of this out. Thank you so much.